Good evening. Thank you for your patience. We had a really busy work session and so we apologize for being just a couple of minutes late to this meeting. Welcome, everyone. My name is Mayor Mike Quickers and this is the Cottonwood Heights City Council Business Meeting for April 5th, 2022. We will begin our meeting this evening by reciting the Pledge of Allegiance and I have asked our Police Chief, Chief Robbie Russo to lead us in this effort.
Please stand if you're able.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Russo as well. We have a public acknowledgement this evening that I would like to read before we get to our citizen comment period. Whereas, this is a proclamation dated 2020 of April 2020, whereas children are the future of the world and investing in their general welfare, safety and livelihood is of utmost importance. And whereas all children deserve to grow up in a safe and nurturing environment to assure that they are able to reach their full potential. And whereas the protection of children and strengthening of families is of concern to and the responsibility of all citizens because the wellness of children affects all lives now and in the future. And whereas child abuse is a serious problem throughout the world, crossing all racial, religious, socio-economic and geographic boundaries. And with each instance of child abuse impacting not only that family, but also the entire community. And whereas the city's Cottonwood Heights City Council therefore deems it appropriate to designate each April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city in order to raise the awareness of the city's residents to the potential for child abuse and to encourage all to be attentive to the problems of families around them and to commit to doing everything they can to help prevent child abuse. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Cottonwood Heights City Council in the city that the city hereby designates each April as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city and calls upon all citizens to renew their commitment to be educated on the impact of child abuse and to join together in working for its prevention within the city. Thank you. Okay, item 4.0 on our agenda this evening is citizen comment period. This is a time for citizens to address the council concerning whatever matters they desire. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak or five minutes if they're representing a group. Please review the public comment procedures on the last page of tonight's agenda. If you haven't already filled out a speaker comment card, please do so and hand it to this to a staff member who will get it to me. When making citizen comments, we request that you were speaking to the microphone so that your comments can be recorded, that you give your name and that you avoid insulting language or comments. The audience should avoid expressions of support or disagreement such as clapping or hissing so that all speakers will feel like they can safely express their thoughts. The council is here to listen, but you shouldn't expect a back and forth dialogue. If you raise questions, our staff will respond to you within a few business days to discuss your questions. For the first comment card that I have this evening is for David Berry, if that's correct. I do not see any other comment cards. We try to speak into the microphone there. It's not turned on. There might be a the screen now. There you go. All right. My comments are concerning the general plan that's being being worked out, worked on in in the works and the the information that's been provided to the community. I would like to just start with saying despite and I've you've emailed responded to me. I've been emailing with Mr. Tini and Adam Holka. But the math, despite people saying the math is correct, the math is not correct. I invite every member of this council, pull out a calculator or do it by hand, but the math does not work. So the proposal on the boards and on on Cottonwood Heights tomorrow's webpage indicates 8,222 population growth against a current 33,000 to 34,000 number. But the proposals are for 5,700 and I believe it's 28. It varies in different places when you when you read things. It doesn't work. If you do the math, that's 1.42 people per household. So if we're going forward with a plan for 57 5,760 odd additional units, we're talking about population growth in the city of enormous proportions. That's not what's being presented to the people of this community. They are being asked to comment on numbers that are just don't work. The math does not work. Even if you take the current number of about 2.69 people per household in Cottonwood Heights. And the number that they're proposing of 2.22, I don't know why there's a drop all of a sudden like today to 2.22 from the current 2.69. The numbers still don't work. You're still talking about a 45 to 50% increase based on that number of additional houses and units. It's impossible. It's impossible. That means a little over 3,000 units are only going to have one person per household and the remainder are going to have it's about 3,500 to 4,500 split. I can only have two. That doesn't count any individual family homes. It doesn't count any duplexes as you were just discussing in in the business meeting. That only accounts for 8,000 you know, 5,760 studio apartments because you can't put more than two people in a studio apartment and you'd have to have leases to say, I'm only allowing one person in that apartment. We all know that's not what's going on. That's not what's happening. We need to have real information, real math put forth before any comments from the community have any validity. Otherwise, we're commenting on false numbers. Ideology has has run up against reality and math is reality. We need to be commenting on reality. Please, let's start over. Thank you, David, for your comments. I appreciate that. And Tim will work on responding to David. Is that right?
Yes, we've been in conversations and responding.
Anything you want to add at all?
I don't at this point.
Our next speaker would be Randy Whitehead.
As I think most of you know who I am. I appreciate the people that have come into that are a part of the committees that are working to help provide input to the city. As you know, there are 200 plus people that have been attending our our citizen meetings. We have formed 17 committees and the committees, the purpose are to inform ourselves on the rules and the laws and led my and how to really help plan for the future growth of the city in a reasonable way that helps take into account and respect the existing residents and what their wishes are. I appreciate all of you for taking the time to help educate us. Really, what we would like to become are partners with the city. And we would like to be able to provide input, do research for you and be able to together identify issues and ways to mitigate the various problems that are out there related specifically to Hillside Plaza Development. We'd really love to see the concept of a city center be there rather than high density residential units. It was interesting. We attended the open house and there were some limited options given to us, but there was one option that I'd like to just reiterate to you. This was an option. This is actually a picture of the one option that was given. And everyone was instructed to put a red dot on the option they didn't like and a green dot on the option that they liked. This from your open house and the residents of the entire city on the Hillside Plaza in that intersection. Every single dot is red, meaning that the residents of this city would prefer not to see high density residential units constructed there. And so I just, I'm going to ask a rhetorical question. Does the city take into account the feedback given by the residents of the city? Do the residents of the city really have a voice? Or was this simply an easy way to say we listened? And maybe it really doesn't matter. I hope it matters. And I hope that you can understand that as a group, we're trying to be responsible. And we really want to make a difference rather than just complain and make noise. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Appreciate it. It takes a special skill set to organize and Randy has done a really good job at organizing it. The next item we have, our next speaker is John Adams.
Hi there, John. I'm in Cottonwood Heights in District Four. I've changed gears a little bit prior when you guys are used to mostly, which is how do we fix this? How do we fix that? It was more of a philosophical thing. And it had to do with the Y2 Analytics Citizen Survey that's coming up and I had spent time recently talking, reading other surveys, other we caught, you know, the past Cottonwood Heights surveys, Envision Utah, speaking with citizens, a lot of our special interest groups and kind of coming in terms of this common anxiety around growth itself, just the the conversation of growth. And so the city doing this planning and I think I'm too late coming here because after the meeting early, I see how far along you are and when you're planning on getting that out. But I had kind of put together, I don't know what you want to call it, a little research paper, if you will, around where this anxiety comes from and around kind of like why this growth happens and how we talk about it. Anyway, I had submitted that to councilperson Burrell, who represents my district and kind of the hopes that she would share it across this group, not as hey, this is something you need to do, but this is a way to think about things differently. It's something that I've found as I've talked to people that I found struggling with the idea of growth was kind of really eye opening and helping them to consider it. So maybe what I do, since I'm probably too late on the Y2K Analytics Survey, but just more broadly what it had to do with. And I guess my ask is that if you get it, if you have time to read, it's not short. It's like eight pages. But I do think it could be something that's helpful. What I was trying to do is broadly open up dialogue around growth by considering why we grow versus how we grow. And I think it's really pertinent because addressing the why helps to capture citizens' values. And when I heard you guys talking about the survey earlier, when you got to the values part, that's where it seemed to get kind of murky. It's tough. It's hard to figure to to figure on that part. In the paper I did, I didn't put examples, but I, from the meeting today, I tried to put one together on the why and that might be, take one issue we're dealing with is where we're going to make decisions around put more housing, which was, it's just came up. When we address the how, we get really a lot of opposing views, but if we step back to address the why and get to our values and we do surveys like the Y2 Analytics, it might be around housing is the goal and I came made it made this up is the goal to enable more people to live here to support a broader tax base, maybe. Is the goal simply to do our part because the population is increasing? And as someone told me at the open house, we can't just put walls around our city and say, we're not going to take anybody. We have to do our part. So we have to find places for people to live here. Is the goal to make sure that any new housing we do supports fires across all economic status? And then we get into a lot of people will say, yeah, but I don't want near my house. It is the goal to keep Cottonwood Heights, you know, more of an upper end place to live. Anyway, so anyway, I just asked the reader that, could I get one more?
Finish your thought. Absolutely. What's that? Finish your thought.
Okay, one more thought just to throw out there specific with that. With the survey you're going to do, I've looked at those and they're hard to answer what you really want. One thing suggestion we may want to do, especially when everything comes down to money is is kind of have a chart that outlays for everyone at the beginning of that, how we get our revenue. Because I'm even struggle understand. I know we read property tax revenue, there's sales tax from people buying stuff, there's business taxes and kind of a pie chart to show that. And then another one that breaks down at some level that you're comfortable with, where we spend that money. And to put a frame around that, so we start to survey people about, you know, what do you want to do? Without that frame, someone may say, well, if we need more revenue, do what you need to do, but I don't don't raise my property taxes. So maybe put more businesses in, but if we start with the frame of our values and maybe those businesses are going to affect the long term of our water or our air or our, you know, the traffic that we have, which more the values, then maybe people step back and take a bigger thought process through that. Anyway, I appreciate the time to throw that out there again. Not it's philosophical, not tactical, but something that I hope helps.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your comment.
If I may make a quick comment, if anybody would like to read John Adams eight-page piece, you can go on my website, which is voteellenburrell.com and I'll have it there. It's very interesting and thought provoking.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian Schutz. Thank you for the pronunciation guide.
My name is Brian Schutz. I live just right down the hill here in the Emerald Heights, HOA. My, my question is basically the same. Why? It was explained to me at the at the open house that the state has said the state, the city has to accommodate growth. We are a landlocked, so to speak, municipality. We can't grow outward in any direction. So that means we have to grow up. Well, now we're no longer a suburb. We're becoming an urban center. And that's not why any of us moved here. We've moved here for the atmosphere that actually was a little horseyer when I first moved in, but you know, there it was a little, we like the suburbia matter. Frankly, I'm happy enough to walk down the street and not be confronted by people begging. If we start having to to have more and more affordable housing here. They might not just be populating all the the highway interchanges with their little signs. They might start moving down the streets. And I, I believe that if the state wants to accommodate further growth, there's a lot of land around here. And I know it's desert that way and it's mountains that way, but that way they could go out there and put a couple of more reservoirs and do some planned communities down there south of the current growth zone, which as you know, from the past few years. It's been just moving down southward, continue that growth. And who knows, maybe the airport down there will become airport number two. And you have Southwest flights going in and out of there and not just was it Air Blue or whatever. But they are trying to shoehorn more and more people into a small space. And I, for one, I mean, the idea that there's no such thing as view shed in the eyes of the law is so much BS because there's folks down here on well, Butler Hill here who are selling homes that that they probably played paid $20,000 for back in the seventies and they're trying to get three quarters of a mil for it. And but they're small houses on small lots, on narrow streets. There's nothing to attract it except beautiful view that they get. So truly, the value in those properties is in something that the state or the law says doesn't exist. It exists. So let them grow south. But don't let them shoehorn more people into such a limited space. This is not an urban environment. There's plenty of room downtown for for more stuff. That's not the Emerald City with a gate out in front and you've got to get through the the front gate to get in. So let it let them do it there or grow further south or even there's still stuff out to the west here in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. I can assure you that the protection of our community is as yet most important to this council. So I appreciate the comment. I do not see any other comments. Do you see anything online? There is one online. I can't see without this. Okay, the person that raised their hand online, if you, if you would unmute them.
Am I unmuted?
Go ahead.
I just was wanting to comment on your earlier business meeting, the one you had, you know, starting at four o'clock. And in that meeting, you were discussing the survey that I guess you're trying to put together to put out and just in, just in, you know, in some of the comments I've heard.
State your name, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Runar.
Thank you. Keep going.
And you know, maybe kind of touching bases with that or alluding to that previous speaker, you know, there's, there's, there's always, there's this talk of affordability. And it's seeming the need to put this on the survey. You know, as he, as your previous speaker mentioned, I mean, I've seen houses online for again, free courses a million dollars. So the affordability must is left. I mean, the Cottonwood Heights is no longer a little backwater that you know, you can find affordable housing anymore. It's, it's an expensive place. It's on the map. And people want to live here. And again, with our limited space, if you put up some high rises, most likely, you know, against private property, we don't control whether you sell it to the seller to or what they sell it for. They're going to sell it to speculators and they'll put it up, the ski visitors to come and stay in these high rise apartments. They don't care. They just want a place to crash so they can go skiing the next day. So I don't really see this desire to put in high-rise structures to accommodate people, want their sons and daughters to live in the city. It's just not going to happen. I was driving around the valley this last weekend up and late and there's a ton of land up there. They're putting up housing transfers and right. Hear them in the same way, Stansbury Park in Tula, the same way, you know, we are constrained community. We don't have the place to grow. And again, that that plaza development we're talking about possibly approving, you know, it's that will probably be bought by speculators and who knows what the price is going to be, but it most likely won't be quote unquote affordable by most people's view. So I don't see the benefit to keep pressing the affordability issue. And so I guess that the survey I just hope would be something that reflects really what you know, what pertains to what goes on within our city limits. You know, national issues, as mentioned earlier, aren't really a place for these, this survey. And it's not going to help us in any way. So I just hope that the future survey, whatever it comes out looking like, will again focus on just city issues that directly affect the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Runar. There's still a hand up. Same one. Okay. Great. With with that, I will close.
Mayor, can I just mention two things? So we did get some public comments that I need to read into the record. I'm not going to read everything. It was all forwarded to the city council. One email was from John Kennington. Apple Valley is what he he says, this has been forwarded for the record. It will be part of our meeting and the council has that. The other one that was provided was from Steve McIntosh. That was also forwarded to the council. So you can review that and that will be part of the record as well. I just wanted to make sure that was included. And I'm done with my time, so.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, I will now close the citizen comment period. And we will move on to item 5.1, which concerns a rezone of a property on Fort Union Boulevard. I'm going to invite our community and economic development director, Michael Johnson, to come up and address this topic. After Mike's comment, we will have a public comment period on this issue as well.
Thank you, Mayor. So I will provide a summary of the request. It's a, it's a request pertaining to thirty five twenty six East Fort Union Boulevard. For a land use map amendment of the general plan as well as a zone change. Here's some context. This property is located a couple of streets east of the, the Gear Room Ski Shop and a little bit west of the the improved city parking ride along Fort Union Boulevard on the southern side. The property is just under one acre and the request by the, the applicant, who's Adam Nash is to amend the land use map designation from residential office to residential medium density. And correspondingly to rezone the property from R one eight, single family residential to R two eight, which is residential multifamily that allows two family dwellings. Here's some context. Again, the property is point nine five acres. It, it's a, it's a fairly old property, no infrastructure frontage improvements today. The, starting with the general plan land use designation, the current land use designation in the city's current general plan is residential office. We interpret the general plan to be the, the city's desire for how it wants the, the city to grow and develop into the future. So residential office is that designation today. And you can see as proposed, the, the designation would be residential medium density, which would match the adjacent property as well. Current zoning is R one eight, single family that allows one single family dwelling per eight thousand square feet. And that proposed zoning is R two eight, which allows a two family dwelling per eight thousand square feet. Here's an example of the uses allowed in the R two eight zone. I will say that these uses are nearly identical to what's allowed in the R one eight zone. With the, the clear distinction that the R two eight zone obviously allows two family dwellings and the R one eight zone does not. But those conditional uses are, if not identical, very, very similar to what's allowed in a standard, single family residential zone today. I'm going to keep going. This, this is not what the applicant would be beholden to, but this is a concept plan that was shared with staff based on some of the lot requirements and including lot frontage. You know, minimum lot width requirements, lot size setbacks, things like that. This is probably pretty close to, to what the, the maximum development could be, but I'm, I haven't engineered the site. That's not my role. So, so I can't commit to that here. But this is what the applicant has, has represented that, that they would like to construct. And this shows kind of the, the footprint of where a, you know, the, the maximum building footprint of a structure. And that's not too much different than the maximum footprint of an R one eight structure. It's some background here. In 2019, the city council initiated a land use map amendment. Previously, the, it's kind of hard to see, but there's a lot of properties outlined in blue on this map. They were previously carried a land use designation of mixed use. And, and the council and some members of the community at the time felt that was too intensive a future use for this portion of Fort Union Boulevard. That's a little quieter, a little more residential in nature. So it went through the planning commission and city council process. Many properties were amended from a land use designation of mixed use to low density, single family residential. Others were amended to medium density residential. That's that lighter or that darker yellow color. And that corresponds to areas where we see two family, multifamily structures already built today. And then others along that corridor, the stretch of the corridor were modified to residential office. And the rationale for, for those, those are purple on the screen was those are the properties that have access exclusively to and from Fort Union Boulevard. There, there's no interior street access to those purple properties. They're, they're accessed directly from the corridor. Just for comparison of what the general plans recommends right now, here, here's what's allowed in the RO, the residential office zone. We don't have any properties actually zoned residential office today, but again, we, we have that land use designation on, on a number of these. It allows single family dwellings. It also allows twin homes. But then it allows a range of kind of lower scale commercial uses. So medical offices, professional offices. You know, care facilities, things like that. I think most indicative of the, the residential office development pattern. The Highland Drive Frontage Road north of Fort Union Boulevard has a number of projects that were developed with residential office zoning from Trilogy Medical to the Cottonwood Dental Office, those buildings along there. Also, the Farmers Insurance across from Dan's is a residential office property. So they allow a wide range of things largely based on the size of the property and parking requirements and things like that. But under residential office, there, there is that, that potential of a, a fuller scale commercial development. So staff's analysis here is that there, there's support for this amendment to, to, from residential office to residential medium density. And I want to clarify, when staff looks at a proposed change like this, the first thing we do is check the general plan. And if a, if a reason request complies with the general plan, then many times we would recommend approval of that rezone. Where it does not comply with the general plan, as it does in this case, we have to do a more thorough analysis. Understanding there's some, some concern and hesitancy over intense commercial development along this stretch. We felt that an amendment from residential office to residential medium density still promotes redevelopment and reinvestment in this property in this place of the corridor, but, but removes the, the concern of a of a large, you know, boxy commercial office building that, that has, you know, traffic and appointments and lighting and things like that, that we saw concerns of on Highland Drive. So R two eight, we felt was a, a good middle ground between what is done today and what the general plan is supportive of, which is largely the basis for our recommendation. Additionally, directly to the east of this property are two existing multifamily homes that were constructed in nineteen seventy eight with legal permits through Salt Lake County. So there is context, area context that, that would support this pattern of development. And, and if you zoom out a little bit, even in the wider area, there are instances of R two developments, both through the, some, some planned unit developments to the west and a few other properties. So staff recommends approval. This was presented to the planning commission on March second. And the planning commission, after taking public hearing and, and considering this unanimously recommended approval to the city council and that final authority lies with you. There is no decision scheduled tonight. That will come back to you in two weeks at the next meeting. Any questions for staff?
I do have a question. So Councilmember Bracken actually brought it up during our work session. Said, if we go ahead and change the zoning, what would stop this landowner from actually coming to back? Now that he's got the zoning wants and even subdividing that lot even further. Or anything to stop that?
Well, the development requirements. So, so minimum lot sizes, setbacks, parking requirements. Lot width, that's, that's a big constraint here. Your lots have to be a certain width. And if you can't, I mean, just because you could pack buildings in, doesn't mean the ordinance allows that. So it'd be those development standards that are going to constrain the, the maximum potential. This property is not big enough to do anything like a planned unit development or anything that allows you to to otherwise get around or modify those development standards. So it'd be fully subject to those R two eight, if approved, development standards. If not approved, they could come in today with a building permits and bypass any legislative process and build likely three single family homes that, that meet setbacks and are thirty five feet tall and fully compliant with code.
I guess the question is, is what is the frontage requirement? How much is there? Is the potential there for a flag lot? And then we can still hear back from Shane on if we want, want to add a zoning condition on density or something like that, or to be passed.
Yeah, good questions. I don't have the answers. I, I certainly can provide those to the council after the meeting. Flag lots have a, a number of other requirements. That's, that's probably more of an engineering exercise than staff normally does when, when these requests come in. But, but we can provide some, some general feedback and information on the, the lot width and, and other potential there.
Yeah, my, my position on, on zone changes has been fairly consistent over the years. And it's what's what's the most or quote worst that could possibly happen? And am I, am I okay with it? Those questions that the mayor outlined and what I guess was just kind of to get a feel for what that might be. Because the current owner may, you know, sell it and that happens quite often and it's come back to bite us. So yeah, any information you can do, what the, that potential would be would be helpful. And it would also be helpful. Again, we'll get, we'll get the feedback, I guess, in our next meeting from Shane on what the conditions are.
Thank you, Councilmember Bracken. Any other comments?
I was going to comment really quick. I've always been in the mindset to try to minimize this. Developers have exactly the opposite thought that I do. I like to see things minimized. You're going out on Fort Union. So you're gonna when you add to those twin homes, say, in this case, it will add twice as many ingress, egresses on to Fort Union. But but I, I just, I, I worry about that setback on the west side. It looks so thin there. Would that change with a single family home?
Well, so it, it could be, I think, a minimum of, I don't know, five or six feet with R two eight. It could be eight feet with R one eight.
Bill seems really small.
It's, you know, the difference is a couple of feet, which can, can be a difference, but, but not drastically different.
Could the council have a a stipulation if, to approve based on wider setback there on the west side?
We, we get into amending the ordinance standards there. And I think that's the question Councilmember Bracken posed to Shane is can we start messing with or modifying the, the standard required setbacks on a rezone by rezone basis. And what happens then is you get, you know, if you do that with multiple rezones, you get a new zone every time you, you do a rezone. And you know, it may be feasible. It's, it's definitely not typical. But, but we'll look into that.
Yeah, there's about five single family homes that are directly affected by this. And as we know, within Ludma, the view shed is not protected, but you know, I have a, a number of, you know, it's a very challenging for me to hear my constituents. You know, what these existing residents are going through, knowing that there could be a thirty five foot, you know, barrier within, you know, ten, twelve feet of their backyard. I would, I would also only point out that directly to the east is another single family and the duplex is located to the southeast on a, through a little private road. So I know it's I think that should be taken into consideration too.
And, and as I did in the work session, I want to clarify, an R one eight development could also be built to thirty five feet high right now. So the, the, the height and the, and the view concerns would, could still be there in, in very similar ways with a, a single family redevelopment there.
Thank you.
And, and the applicant is here. Typically, the council gives the developer applicant a chance to address them and answer questions. And he is here tonight.
So I am going to actually open the public comment period for this issue. And the first person I'd like to call to the, to stand is Cynthia Blair.
Thank you, Mayor Wickers. This is quite intimidating, but I really appreciate your support. For those of you who don't know me, I'm the homeowner to the west who will be affected by that very small setback. So I am here to speak against the proposal, as were most of the people at the public hearing that the planning commission had. Most of us were against the rezoning. My neighbor Jenna and I, since that meeting, have gone around and talked to our neighbors. We have gained at least close to ninety signatures from neighbors both close around us and from people a little further west who are against the rezoning. Their reasons are, one, they, as one of the speakers before said, we all moved to this area to have the suburban experience and to have lower density. Another concern for people is the traffic. We have a substantial number of people west of Bywater Park who on several days during the year, especially snow days are unable to get to church, the church on Nuttree on, because of the traffic on Fort Union Boulevard. And everybody I've talked to feels very, very strongly that this area should be kept residential, single family. Even if we do residential, single family, three structures, it will still, the building will still take up less area, I think, than the duplexes. One of the things that some of my neighbors have mentioned, people who've lived here for a long time, they said that they had been told years ago that denser development would not take place east of twenty seven hundred east. I know manager Tingey said, we can't really count on those past promises. But I know that all of my neighbors feel very strongly that they would like to see the area stay residential, single family. One of the things that I was really encouraged about. Ellen has been very helpful to me in suggesting that I research some of the laws and ordinances. And I was encouraged to find out that, as you know, you as a city council have the ability to reject the proposal to you can affirm it, reverse it, alter it, or put it under review. And I appreciate your willingness to consider this. Also that as residents, if we don't like your decision, we can appeal to the courts, just as the developer could, if they don't like your decision. And that one of your obligations is to ensure that the provoke, proposed development is compatible with surrounding neighborhoods. I think that it's obvious. I don't know if I get to speak anymore because I, I, I'm speaking for ninety people. No. It's obvious why I personally want it. And I agree that I think view shed should be considered. We have an incredible view of Ferguson Canyon. And if those duplex, if that duplex goes up like so close to our property line, as you were saying, not only will it just block our view shed, but we will have very little privacy and not a lot of sunlight either. So I just am really grateful to you for listening to me and grateful to the mayor and manager Tingey for meeting with us this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you, Cynthia. Like you mentioned, we, we enjoyed having you and your mom and Jenna and Brandon come, come and talk with Tim and I and and if anything, we want you to understand your opinion matters. And, and, and everything that you talked about is important. I do want to invite the applicant up if he would like to come in that he's here and would like to come.
Good evening. I'm Adam Nash and I am the applicant. I own a company called Land Development and that's the applicant's application was filed through. I've been listening to a lot of the comments today. They're very similar to comments up and down the Wasatch front, obviously. And so I'm very well aware of the challenges that there are, particularly with infill properties like this. You have neighbors and you have a lot of issues that if you had a clean slate, you know, you wouldn't have to deal with those things. Everyone could have the layout they want. I might appreciate Mr. Johnson's professional report and studies. It's very thorough and he wrote that without emotion. And based on his presentation and recommendations, the request should be approved. Mr. Johnson did say though, however, that the master plan is for RO. And that the R two point eight is not consistent with that. But I beg to differ. Twin homes are permitted use in RO. They're not. We're, we're only talking semantics here, R two eight or RO. Permitting use in either, either zone. That is our preference. We will commit to three lots. I have no issue with that whatsoever. You make that a condition or whatever you want. The properties are planned as owner occupied. So there'll be each side will be its own property and it can, it will be available to be owner occupied, sold that way, financed that way. I appreciate the effort that went into talking to the neighbors, gathering some quite a few. I appreciate the effort that went into uh, talking to the neighbors, grab gathering some, quite a few signatures and these type of things. Hopefully, they can be open minded as I will be and try to address the situation and the concerns of the community. However, small subdivision with three lots, not particularly impactful. Not trying to minimize it. I'm just saying, we're the lot that has the frontage on Fort Union with ten thousand cars a day. Up and down Fort Union, almost all houses that had the opportunity have isolated themselves by building fences and walls and uh, structures that, you know, frankly, it doesn't look good. And I don't, I don't even know if that's legal anymore, but it's been done and it doesn't give me the uh, the appearance that I want coming through the gateway of the city. Um, a couple of comments about our immediate neighborhood. So the neighbor to the west just built an ADU in their backyard or in our backyard and under the same ordinances and codes that we will build under. Their setbacks are really close. I just want to point that out. People take advantage of these things to their benefit and then, you know, oftentimes want to limit other people. The adjoining neighbors to the east are two twin homes that were built in nineteen seventy-eight. The home next to those has been referred to several times as a single family residence. It is built as a single family residence, however, it is used as a commercial property with half a dozen to ten uh, work vehicles parked there throughout the day and overnight, just to clarify that. The neighbors request that you deny our zone request. In trying to work and be compatible with our community that we're working in, of course, I would like to know under what objections and then see if I can help compromise or mitigate those. I wasn't particularly given, you know, something I can control. Things I was given are pretty global. And I do understand the challenges within fill properties and they are difficult to develop and they're difficult to um, to govern. So I mentioned I will, I will commit for sure to three lots. Not an issue for us at all. That's what we want. We need lots to be big so that we can build the type of homes that are necessary for this little project to go through. They have to be significant homes, so I can't have insignificant lots with really small footprints. But I am willing to make that commitment. I'm not willing to make the commitment about me being restricted to heights and setbacks. Real short story, I did it in Holiday City for my own personal house. I said, great, I'll build the twenty-eight feet. I'll move my setbacks in. Within months after the completion of my home and me moving in, the two neighbors to the east of me, which happened to be the view of Mount Olympus, built twenty by thirty concrete block barns that exceeded thirty-five feet in height. I built to my height limitation and they built to theirs. But see, we don't get a limit to people around us if we only limit ourselves. Kind of an issue of fairness. Oftentimes in communities, you know, I grew up in Holiday. I live in Murray. I own and have built property in Cottonwood Heights. I'm no stranger to this area. I've lived here, gone to high schools here, practiced diving at Brighton High School. You know, I feel like I'm a resident. I used to be because we all used to be solid coming. But what that resolves to us, particularly I sat on the board in Holiday City to discuss these kind of problems was a lot of my neighbors and stuff were like, you know, we understand there's a shortage of housing, but don't solve it in my backyard. Or I wanted to live in Holiday. Now I'm in, lock the gate. And these are common responses, and particularly when there's the issue of change. Um, benefits to the community I think are important to outline. I'll be redeveloping an obsolete and obliterating property. I will improve the visual access and the gate into the city from the canyons. And it does improve the overall safety of the community. I will be installing two hundred and ten feet of uh, roadways, which will be built to a new standard, and that standard has wider sidewalks, curb gutter, arc strips, as well as bike lanes. And these are things that haven't been done in the old properties. The homes that we'll be building are green construction. The methods and the materials that will be used improve the overall efficiency of the homes and reduces the carbon footprint of the housing significantly over what currently exists. We what, we do want to provide new housing into the area and it's needed because there's no housing and really high demand for it. And residents that aren't here yet and can't speak for themselves, they would. They want to live here, too. The benefits of the city also are the public safety, of course, improving the gateway into the city and an environmentally friendly project will also be improving the infrastructure for the city with roads, sidewalks, bike paths, the storm drain, sewers, power, gas. These are all things that we will be bringing up to higher standard. I have pictures of proposed buildings that we're going to do and stuff, but probably not appropriate this time. But those are my feelings. I really appreciate an approval. I'd like to build some really nice houses in your community. Any questions I can answer?
Thank you. Uh, you did say something that caught my curiosity. You said you would assure owner occupancy. How would you, how would you go about that?
Well, I can't, but they're built for owner occupancy and they they will be legally set up for owner occupancy. There's a big difference between a duplex and a twin home with regards to the duplex can't be divided. And so it typically is a property that's going to be a rental. These properties are pretty darn expensive if you're going to rent them out. So I would say I heard earlier about the quality of individuals that are coming to the city. Well, a real expensive property, it would be aligned with real expensive rents. But these properties are going to be way too expensive to do that with. And if they are done, they'll be the kind of residents that you do want. They're always my my guys. They have money, so I always want those guys. Questions?
It was Adam, right? Thank you, Adam. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it. Not seeing any of your color, any other comments. I will close the comment period, public comment period before you rezone. We have another one still. Great. Well, we will move on to item five point two, which is an on-street permit parking code discussion that will have our director Johnson come up and lead us in again.
Thank you again, Mayor. This one's a little quicker. This is an a proposed amendment to eleven point two-two of the city code, which is the ordinance that administers the on-street permit parking petition. Um, this is the ordinance that has enabled in in the past couple of years residents to collect petitions, demonstrate whether they meet certain ordinance criteria, and if they do receive approval to create a an on-street permit parking program in residential neighborhoods, which allows residents of the area to park on public streets, but restricts other vehicles, known as commuter vehicles, from parking on public streets. There was a desire expressed by the council and the police department, even dating back to previous proposals that were approved, uh, in in whether this was a fair ordinance or whether this was something the city wanted to continue to allow. Um, at the council retreat this year, there was further discussion on this and some concern about the the equity of allowing certain people to park on public streets and not others. Uh, as a result, staff has proposed an amendment to that ordinance, which strikes the ability for residents to establish permit parking via petition to the council uh, and instead only focuses on administering those that have already been created. So what's in front of you for public comment tonight and for action at the next meeting is an ordinance that does not allow for the creation of on-street permit parking, neither by resident petition nor by council authority. Um, but it does allow for the ongoing administration of existing permit parking areas and council modification of those areas following a specified process. Any questions on this one?
Great, thank you. Uh, I will now open a public comment period on the on-street permit parking code. I don't see any request to comment. Ends up online. Seeing that, I will close the come public comment period for 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 issue five point two. Then we will move on to six point zero, which is staff reports. And we're going to invite up Police Lieutenant Dan Bartlett to give us a report on our police department.
Good evening. I have the uh, the March report as as well as the quarterly stats for you guys tonight. In the month of March, sorry, I'm gonna move this. In the month of March, we had thirteen thirteen hundred and eighty-three calls for service with two hundred and ninety on-view cases. Our average dispatch time, as you can see, six minutes, twenty-seven seconds for priority ones. Um, our four-minute response time remains about the same, as well as that two minutes coming out of Beck. Uh, for our priority one, our priority two and three, and we have a couple of call, a couple of calls that threw kind of threw these off that we're waiting. Are 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 not what we like and and we are still continuing to work on on this uh, this backlog of calls that we're, that's taking so long to get. But as you can see, four to five minutes for our response time is what we expect of our officers in a city like this with the traffic we have on average. So we're we're pretty pleased with that. We continue to work with that. Our overall crime view for the month of March was significantly lower, which we're happy about. Uh, we had a quiet month this month and or we had a quiet month, the month of March, and and we're pretty pleased about that. And that allows to work on some other things that that we are going. Our arrest for the month of March, seventy-five adult arrests and one juvenile arrest, which we we really like. Traffic citations for the month of March, one hundred and ninety-nine uh, traffic citations. And like I said before, I like to float around the two fifteen mark um, for traffic citations with around a hundred warnings issued. Um, this is kind of the the mark that we'd like to see. And then we had ten DUIs, so. Uh, thirty-five accidents for the month and and seventy or seven injury accidents. There's our three-month in review, um, which is about standard for us on 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 our time. You know, January is very busy. Um, we had a couple of things going on for the snowstorms and stuff like that, but this is about typical for our this time of year. Animal control and code enforcement, you know, we added a new animal control uh, person. We did need some moving and and did some stuff. And so they're getting busy and with spring coming, we have a lot of code enforcement issues um, and and other things that we're dealing with right now, um, as well as a couple of initiatives that we were working on. So they're very busy right now and they will continue to be through uh, through the summer. We had two unattended deaths from the month of March. Here's your heat map for all property crimes. And I know last time we spoke, last time I was up here, I talked about mapping for tickets and we are still working on that, trying to get that dialed down and and so you guys can see where those tickets are being issued and stuff like that. And I think we have a a resolution on that and I hope to have it out for next month's presentation that Tim will send out on the for for you guys. So I think we have it dialed in. It's been a project, so. But I know you asked for it and we're working on it.
Hey, Dan, just a quick clarification. On the red spot, that's the hotspot, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that Santa Fe and Boulder? Is that?
That's the union, the whole center, right? The whole Union Park Center, Target, Home Depot. That's.
So that's the, that's a lot of population. Okay.
It's, yeah, it's Target and Depot and all those.
Um, we had uh, ABC four got ahold of me last month and asked if if we could put one of our officers on um, behind the badge. Uh, they wanted to to kind of promote what we were doing up here. And so we put young uh, Brody Bowen on behind the badge and it's, it, he actually does a really good job with it. And so I included it in this. You can see when it gets sent out to you guys. You can click the link and and watch it. He does a very good job for being a new officer, but we really liked the message. And so I kind of wanted to share that with you guys tonight. Uh, we had a couple of deer graduations. Um, I saw a few of you guys there. Um, we always appreciate being in the schools. And like I said, too, at the deer graduations, it's very important for us. We get the opportunity to speak uh, to the children and have a positive interaction with the children in our community, um, that they get to know the officers and they get to know us and what we do. We bring our canine out. We come out and speak to them. Um, and I, we we really appreciate there and we we feel it's a a very important program in our city. So we had a couple of deer graduations. Mayor, you joined me. Thank you for that. And I got to see you as well, Sean. So it was, I always appreciate doing those robberies out of town, so I got to do it. So it's kind of fun for me. Uh, our safety message for the month, distracted driving awareness um, for for our citizens. Distracted driving is a a huge issue and we wanted to get that out and educate the public some more. Any questions for me?
Let me just add how important I think that deer graduation was. You know, one of the things that that allows is for a younger group to associate with a police officer. We have a a young officer, Kelly Taylor, who just does a great job with these kids. I I, my first question is, how many of you kids like Officer Taylor? And they raised their hand as literally as high as they can raise it. And the interaction, you can see there's genuine genuineness there. And I think the ability or the the willingness for for us to take, continue to interact as a police department with our community. Thank you. And please, you know, let your staff know how how appreciative I am at their graduation and and in our entire community.
Absolutely. And and like I said, I mean, we love doing it. We we really feel like it's a great thing and a and a big, a a big introduction for those kids to what law enforcement officers in their city do, so.
Questions, comments? Did one thing come my head? Oh, go ahead, Tim. Well, I, the DUI number was ten. Is that pretty consistent?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Ends up, okay.
Seven, seven to ten a month.
To me, there isn't a more important pair drivers offer.
And we agree.
I just want to add that, uh, and you've probably seen them on TV quite a bit and the radio recently. But Lieutenant Bartlett and Chief Russo have done a great job in the police department in a fundraiser for Camp Hope. Um, definitely a a very important cause to assist children that have been affected by crimes and appreciate their efforts. And and it was a great thing. They partnered with the DA's office, but really came up with a unique way to raise some funds and did a great job in the media. So thank you.
Thank you. We learned a lot of valuable lessons in that uh, in that little uh, little push that we had. Uh, it was super fun. It wasn't that fun being on live TV for me in the studio, but we had a lot of fun um, learning about Camp Hope, promoting Camp Hope, and we think we did, we think we did a great thing, uh, you know, to help these children. Um, and it wasn't about us. It wasn't about the DA's office. It was about child crime victims, so.
Okay. Thanks, Lieutenant.
Thank you.
May I just add a couple of things?
Yes, absolutely, Chief.
Um, first of all, thank you for your comments on Dare. I agree that it's so important to have that interaction, especially in this climate with police officers at that level. They see him as a a teacher, a friend, a mentor, as a man and woman. Um, the initial feasibility study for the city did not include a dare officer, but the council at the time realized the value of having that interaction. So you funded that position. So thank you for that. As to code enforcement, um, Mr. Tingey can tell you from firsthand experience, there's nothing more sensitive. Those guys work really hard and it can, it can become a problem in a neighborhood that gets. In a neighborhood that gets, um, the entire neighborhood involved, um, we have to give a shout out to Public Works. We had a home in our neighborhoods that it was a mess, there was junk, I mean, really junk, not just a few weeds, but it was horrible. He came out with their crew and they cleaned it up, just cleaned it up, one day, um, got the house transitioned and sold and. All is well, but those things take time and we have to work together and we were glad to do that, so thank you for the support.
Thank you, Chief. With that, we, uh, will move on to our Public Works report and have, uh, Director, Public Works Director Matt Shep come and address us.
Good evening, again, Mayor and Council. It's good to be here with you. Let me find my. My thrilling. Uh, presentation, so, here we go. This is our quarterly report for the Public Works Department to give you an update on where we are and where we're going and what's happening, so. Right out of the gate, let's hit the, the good stuff. Um, this is the, the, uh, last snow report for the year, just to bring you up to speed, we typically track it. Through the, uh, end of March, and we'll see where it takes us, but as far as this past year is concerned. Um, I've got a screen here in the way. Sorry. Oh. Not know how to do this, okay, we had, um. On inches of snow, total of about seventy-five inches throughout, twenty-two hundred tons of, uh, salt. We tossed out and we traveled close to twenty thousand miles on all the trucks moving around, so. And we feel like the season's over, anything comes at this point is going to be wet, mostly rain, but like we had, uh, earlier today, so. That's the snow report, and we do track it since we've started, you can see we've gone all the way back to twenty sixteen. And, uh, we keep track of the data as we, uh, collect it. Um, update on what's happening, we talked a little bit about the roundabout already. You can watch the progress anytime from here, it's always thrilling, if you watched it yesterday, you would have watched the track hoe. Fall into a ditch, that was always fun, um, no one was hurt in the creation of that fiasco, but everything was fine. Um, chip seal projects that are going to happen this month, this is part of year four, if you recall. That are, that we're into the summer of year four, so it'll be going out thirtieth East, Big Cottonwood Canyon Road, Danish Road and seventy-two hundred South. Those are the heavier seal coats on the road, um, give it a little longer wear, we're also going to be bidding out the striping this month. Um, and then you'll see that contract in front of you in May, it's once again part of the budget, it's already been through, we just bring it back to you. Update on Ferguson Canyon Park, that is the off-leash park up. Off of, uh, Wasatch, um, contractors back at work, they went through a, a winter shutdown, so they are back. And we estimate their completion sometime middle of June, that put thirtieth on there for the park itself to complete, completed. Now, as far as the parking lot is concerned, that won't go out to bid till sometime this month, the end of this month. And just as a reminder, once again, to make sure that we're all aware, the parking lot is a federal aid project. Different money, different source of funding versus the park itself, which is a city-sponsored project. So they're both two different contractors, they have to be split that way, there is a definite line of demarcation. To keep them separated for funding and construction. Um, that's why it's a little odd that they're going through this, the federal process is a little more intense than a city project, but, uh. We estimate that parking lot itself to be completed sometime in September. Gives the park a good chance to catch and grow and be ready for the off-leash use that it's there for, so that is going forward. Um, also, we've, you've approved, uh, previous council stormwater survey project, this is for all of our utilities in stormwater. We have a contractor out right now, just actually surveying each manhole, um, finding locations where there aren't manholes. Once we're done with that, we will go out to bid. Hmm, next month, yeah, you should see something in front of you next month for the raising of those manholes. You've already, once again, that's already been a, uh, budgetary issue that's been approved. It's the contract that we'll be bringing back to you, once we have those raised and up and where they need to be. We'll go in and start the next phase of that, which is camera and flushing all those lines to find out. Exactly what we have underground so that we can start developing those projects and working with that stormwater fee that we have in place. Um, so that's, that's happening right now. Uh, part of the track funding, which was given to us, gosh, I'm going to say four years ago. Well, probably three years ago and they took, they stopped it because of COVID, because of budgetary issues, so it's been back and forth. The funds have been released again, so we're moving forward on the, uh, Big Cottonwood Trail reconstruction. That starts somewhere about Market Street Grill. And we'll take the money as far as we can take it to reconstruct that section of the trail, you'll know if you walk it or been on it. You'll notice the tree roots have really done a lot of damage to that section of the trail, so that's really reconstructing that, and that's a track grant. Yes.
I just had a, a wonder to those of us that use that trail on a regular basis, um. I realize that the, uh, sixty-two hundred South then is the, our border with Holiday, I believe. Uh, and, uh, just wondering, um, if there are any plans in the works to, uh, uh. Complete or to connect in some way, uh, bicyclists who are using that. And they want to go north of Knutson, say they're riding north through Holiday, or even if they're riding to the west, uh, along sixty-two hundred. A south, uh, that becomes so dangerous, like immediately, just wondering, um, are, are we in conversation with Holiday or I, I don't know.
I will briefly point to Mr. Johnson, I know there's the, uh, city inter, I forget the name of it.
Yeah, I think the best place would be in that mid-valley after transportation plan. That we have an element that we'll be considering, Holiday has its own element as well, we can go look at that and, and, and see what's on there.
The Holiday Trail already extends from under the, from the city border all the way over to forty-fifth South.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry, what, what was that, Councilman Bracken?
The Holiday Trail, it's a biking trail, a biking lane. Already exists going from the city border under the, uh, freeway all the way out Holiday Boulevard. Right down into downtown Holiday, I think it goes all the way to forty-fifth, but I may not, that may not be right, it goes at least to forty-eight South.
Right, once you're on holiday.
Right.
Okay, well, thank you, thanks for letting me interject, thank you.
No problem, um, another issue bringing forward, we are moving forward with this, this came up. At last council meeting, this discussion was had for the fence, the wrought iron fence that is along Highland. Um, roughly Bengal, south to Forest Creek Road, um, it is a city fence. Um, it is in bad need of repair, and, uh, we've gone out and got estimates for repairing that, and I've signed an agreement with a. With a fence mason, a brick mason to go in and make those necessary repairs and reinstall the wrought iron and. So we are moving forward with that, I don't have an exact timeframe for you right now, but it, but it's going forward. Um, and I know that was a big, uh, thing last council meeting, so we went.
Cost is remarkable, so we, absolutely go forward.
Yeah.
What was the cost?
Pretty good.
About sixteen thousand.
Oh.
It's, it's a little, it, I have, the contractor went out with me and looked at it, there were posts he's okay with and making them work. So we weren't rep- repairing all, replacing, I'm sorry, replacing all of them, so. The caps, reinstalling the wrought iron, using the longer bolts, taking everything off, regrouding it, sealing it, there's a whole. Thing going on, but yes, we are moving forward with that, so. Uh, just the good news, um, I'm just to keep you up to date and informed, we have been selected for an audit for our stormwater program. It's a random selection by the state under the permit, the net, national pollutant discharge and elimination. Permit or the NPDS, we've been selected, we start that audit next week, it's about a three, four-day audit that we will be going through, so it's, uh. Just as we're taking care of it, just wanted to let you know, it's nothing special, it's a random draw and we got lucky. Or unlucky, however you want to look at it. Um, some of the grants we applied for this year, just to bring you up to date on those, we applied for a surface, uh, transportation alternative grant. Which was the Fort Union project, you'll remember, we talked about putting bicycle lanes, trail on the, uh, on the north side of Fort Union. This was, um, generally in the area we just spoke about, we did not get that grant, um, a lot of, lot of. They held back on a lot of money this year, so we did not get that grant, but one thing we did do was the tap or the transportation alternative. That was the Hawk Signal, which is, we are looking at installing the Hawk Signal. At, uh, roughly the intersection of Nye Drive and Fort Union, that if you'll recall is for the elementary school right there. But we also get a lot of foot traffic crossing the road in that general area outside of the school, um, so we feel like we did good there. Um, the, the issue is the grant doesn't really become available till twenty twenty-five. Um, it's about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, yeah, well, four hundred and ninety thousand dollars total for the project, but, uh. We, we feel like we were able to pull off something there and get, get something good for that section.
Doesn't say grant amount, do you know what that is?
Yeah, the grant, four hundred and fifty-four thousand. Yeah.
Oh, great.
And then the city match is thirty-two, when it becomes time in October twenty twenty-five, we'll, we'll have to come up with the. Thirty-three thousand dollars for our portion of that roughly half million dollar job, so. And I don't know if you're under the Hawk Signal, what that is, it's an actual stop sign, stop signal, when you push the button, all traffic has to stop.
What is the easterly coordinate of Nye Drive approximately?
It's just, it's where Bella Vista comes out.
It's Bella Vista Elementary right there.
We wanted to, to, uh, accelerate that project, we could reimburse that though.
You cannot reimburse from the grant, no, that is one of the conditions, you can't go forward and build it, so unfortunately, that's. That's how the, those grants work.
May I ask a quick question, since the, uh, bike path, uh, uh, there on the north side of Fort Union Boulevard in the easterly section of Fort Union. Uh, did not go through that, that, to improve that area, and so cars are parking there. And then people are running across Fort Union Boulevard, because they don't want to walk all the way to where, uh, Fort Union meets Wasatch Boulevard. Could there be a consideration of some kind of crosswalk or ability for people that are, uh, wanting to come across Fort Union Boulevard? From where they parked, you know, unofficially parked there on the north side of Fort Union Boulevard, uh, for safety purposes. Whether they're running to the gear room or just trying to cross, the, it's quite a long stretch where there's no crosswalk ability. From basically what, three thousand east of Fort Union Boulevard, I think that section, can we consider, uh?
We can't look at it and consider it, it's one of the, one of the things we do have to look at is putting in a crosswalk at a place where there's. Had the, the business itself is not supposed to have any customers over there, and so we're inviting. I don't want to say illegal foot traffic, but we would be inviting that kind of traffic, so we need to look at the whole. And decide what's the best location, and then I'll have to bring that back to you for a budgetary, uh, discussion. I mean, we're, it's, it, yeah, we, we certainly can look at it, I do have some concerns about putting in a crosswalk for a business like that. Just in that location, one, when the business came in, part of their condition was they did not park over there nor invite customers over there. Um, and then it's just a single business at this point to send the.
Well, and I, and you know, you would know better, but, uh, it, it seems to me that, you know, residential areas need to be connected and, and. Residents need to be able to cross over these arterials in ways that encourage them. Uh, whether, you know, they might be walking to church, or they might be children trying to, to visit the neighborhood on the other side of Fort Union. So I'm not solely looking out for the best interest of the gear room, but I am very interested in seeing how we can. Uh, make our, uh, community more connected and, uh, encourage people to go on foot and to, you know, uh. You know, travel in some way other than feeling they have to drive their car everywhere because of these fast-moving arterials such as Fort Union.
Well, that was what part of the project was, was to extend that bike path, if you will, and then add that. On the north side, right now, we don't have any point from there to there, so we, we, we try not to invite pedestrians into an area. That does not have a way to traverse that area, um, so. Further to the west, down around, you know, around the bend, if you will, there is some areas we can certainly look at, and that has residents on. Both sides, further to the east, we have one side, but we have a sidewalk on that one side, so it's something we can certainly look at.
Well, just, just as.
What I'm saying, we have other areas, I mean, other than the city that right now I would consider more pressing for pedestrian crossings. When you talk about churches and things of that nature, Creek Road is, comes to mind right.
Great, yes.
That's something we, we're, we're evaluating all of them.
Thank you.
Okay. That's mine for today, I don't have a questions. Thing, sorry, I'll borrow a dance, but.
Matt, I want to thank you, Amets helped me, uh, or helped our city on a number of things. One of them, we had a light problem, we had, uh, road discrepancies, we had all kinds of fence issues, but thank you so much for. What you do between our animal control, I mean, I had a rat, rabid raccoon taken care of, we've had the police, uh. Help us find and apprehend people that have stolen things, and thanks so much to the city for. The many, many things that you do to help us out, thank you.
Pleasure, thank you, and I'll take all the credit for the police.
Thanks, Matt. Well, good, so that, uh, brings us to our legislative items, we only have one item, uh, for this evening, and that is a consideration. Of ordinance three, seven, eight, amending the city's code of ordinances concerning water-wise landscaping sketch standards. And I'm, I'm going to have Director Johnson once again come up and just briefly, uh, let us talk about those, this issue.
Thank you. Let's get the summary up, this is an ordinance that's been discussed in previous work sessions, it's been through the planning commission process. Um, it, it proposes to, um, add a new regulation to the city zoning ordinance pertaining to future, uh, residential and commercial development. Uh, in terms of, um. Uh, regulating irrigation, landscape beds, lawn and lawn areas, uh, in a more, uh, water-efficient manner. Um, the impetus for this ordinance is, um, ordinances like this are required for cities to remain eligible for. Um, landscape conversion subsidy programs, uh, our water district that oversees Cottonwood Heights and its residents is. Central Utah Water Conservancy, Conservancy District, and they offer, um, reimbursements for residents who convert their lawns to, um. To, to more water-wise landscaping patterns, or convert their park trip, park strips to the same. Uh, and to remain eligible, uh, an ordinance like this is required, uh, numerous other cities have adopted ordinances like this, I, I think Riverton, Harriman. Uh, South or West Jordan, um, are, are nearby cities who have ordinances like this already in place. Um, and, and you can see here, it does limit the amount of lawn and, and the focus there is that, that the grass is supposed to be. Uh, purposefully designed as, as, you know, central activity or gathering areas, and it limits the amount of grass in kind of your, your side yards. Or your ancillary areas, uh, in lieu of a more efficient, uh, planting that, that utilizes less water. I'll just show this, uh, graphic, because I think it's helpful, this is kind of the idea here, is that moving forward, new development will have a, a better balance of. Uh, lawn and activity areas that they're more centralized and then, um. Kind of supplemented by planting beds and things like that, that, uh, that don't utilize as much, um, culinary water to, um, to keep alive. Uh, we already do have park strip landscaping standards in place, this just slightly tweaks those to remain eligible for this program. Um, and, and that is kind of the summary of it, I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Said thirty-five percent of, uh. Can only be lawn, is that what that means?
Yeah.
That, what that picture represents?
Yep. Yeah, this is.
Thirty-five percent of the entire lot or?
Of the yard area.
Yard area.
Yeah.
Great, any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mike, I will now entertain a motion to approve ordinance three, seven, eight, amending the city's code of ordinances concerning. Water-wise landscaping standard.
I may move that we approve that, Mayor.
I'll second.
Motion to approve, Councilmember, uh, Peterson, and a second from Councilmember Newell. Um, questions, comments, there are none, uh, I will, uh, call for the vote. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes.
That's a member Bracken.
Yes.
That's a member Newell.
Yes.
Councilmember Burrell. Councilmember Burrell.
Yes.
I will, yes. Okay, the last item on our agenda this evening is, is approval of our consent calendar, I, I will entertain a motion to approve these minutes. These minutes are for our meetings on March twenty-second.
I've moved to approve the minutes from March twenty-second.
I'll second that.
Movement to approve from Councilmember Newell and a second from Councilmember Peterson, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Opposed? That concludes the items on our agenda this evening, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, before we adjourn, can I mention, Don Anzac, his birthday today, I know the chief sent this to me, his birthday was today, passed away today. He was a former council member and one of the, one of the parks in my district was named after him. But I just wanted to acknowledge that and thank him and his family for his contributions to our city.
I, I was going to bring that up as well, Doug, he was one of the council OGs, I guess, I'm, I'm getting to be one of the last ones left, but. Don did a huge amount for this city, the rec center was. Was one of his first things that he really is known for, it's been a sad day, so. Our condolences to the rest of the Anzacs.
Thank you both for acknowledging that, I, I didn't know that, so I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Go ahead, Council Bracken.
I'll, I'll, I'll move that y'all can adjourn and go home, I'm already there.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, we are adjourned.